Good evening. Welcome to the April 14th meeting of the Aiken City Council. If you are inclined, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray, amen. Chief, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I will review the guidelines. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protem Edgerido for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you here. Hope everybody had a great spring break and Masters Week and this week. Happy Easter, happy Passover. A lot going on, as always, in Aiken. Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, so I present this as a motion.
Thank you, and may I have a second, please?
Second that, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Brolle, second the motion. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I shall move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion and I second from Councilwoman Gregory. Any comments or changes? All in favor? Everyone's in favor. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation designating April as Fair Housing Month. Ms. Craig, I welcome you to come to the podium at this time. Councilwoman Diggs, will you please read the proclamation? Good evening.
Whereas, April 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended. And whereas, the law enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, through the years, we have made great strides in opening housing markets, giving all Americans an equal opportunity to live wherever they choose. And whereas, housing discrimination, although less obvious and pervasive than in years past, still exists. And whereas, the city of Aiken, as well as the Aiken Board of Realtors, are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure that every American of their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, Teddy Milner, Mayor, and the entire council of the city of Aiken, South Carolina, do hereby designate April as Fair Housing Month in Aiken and ask that all citizens support this law to ensure fair housing for everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation designating April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day. Would you, the representatives from the Aiken Downtown Association and the Energy and Environmental Committee, please come to the podium for the presentation. Councilwoman Gregory, will you read the proclamation, please?
My pleasure, Mayor Milner. Proclamation, whereas 2025 marks the 55th anniversary of Earth Day, first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970. And whereas, landmark environmental legislation has resulted from the Earth Day movement, including the Clean Air, Clean Water, and Endangered Species Acts, as well as a vastly expanded understanding of our fragile environment. And whereas, the city of Aiken is officially designated as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation since 1985. And whereas, the city of Aiken has continued to improve our local environment with policies on recycling, tree planting, energy conservation, and improved land and water usage. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Aiken will recognize the efforts of those working to improve our environment, both locally and nationally, through the support and participation in the local Earth Day activities. And be it further resolved that the city of Aiken, along with the sponsors of Aiken Earth Day activities, recognizes the continued need for environmentally sound policies at the individual, community, state, federal, and global levels. Now, therefore, Mayor Teddy Milner and the City Council of the city of Aiken, South Carolina, do hereby designate April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in Aiken. And urge our citizens to support Earth Day 2025 and look for ways to promote green city initiatives in our community.
We have a... Don't we have a movie or a video?
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Earth Day Aiken. Fifty-five years Earth Day has been going on annually, and it's just a time that we can think about how we can make our world or our planet a little bit better.
Aiken historically has always been ecologically and green-minded. This is another big year. It's the 35th anniversary of the city starting the very first recycling program in South Carolina that is still going strong today.
On behalf of Aiken City Council, I welcome you to the 2025 Earth Day Festival. Aiken is a community that prioritizes our natural resources. From Hitchcock Woods to our beautiful parkways and the 2,500 acres that the city has protected around our reservoir, Aiken continues to be a leader in protecting our green spaces. The city received our 40th Annual Tree City Award this year as well. This is a national recognition for cities to demonstrate excellent tree management. I am so proud to be part of this.
All right, congratulations to all of our winners and also want to say a huge thanks to all of our local schools who participated in the art contest. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Thank you all. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kurt Johnson, 114 Brewstaway, Aiken. First of all, I want to thank God and the city council and the mayor for everything that you guys have done for us. I am pastor of Lost Sheet Ministries, which is an outreach for the people that are unsheltered, homeless, and dealing with different addictions, problems. And we have had a lot of amazing things happen over the last four weeks. We've had three people that have gone to rehab. In fact, one of them today, who was banned from every park in the city, left for rehab today. So, we are so happy about that. So, that's one thing. Everybody knows Becky. She is doing really well. I don't think she's very angry these days. So, that's another good thing. Some of the other good things that are going on is that the people that we've got out there, even though they're still sleeping on the streets, they're starting to pick up the trash where they are. We're having them do that to give them a sense of what it feels like to be a part of the community. So, we want them to give back a little bit. Instead of just giving to them, we want them to give back. So, we're trying to get them to do that. We've also got them their IDs. We've gotten four more IDs this week. We've handed out probably, well, we started with 40 cases of MREs, Meals Ready to Eat. We're down to about 10 cases over the last three months. So, they're, these things are, they're easy to fix. They're high in protein, and they leave less mess because they're less packaging. So, we're doing very well on that. So, I just wanted to say thank you and say that we're making progress, and we're so thankful. Our next outreach will be the 26th of April, and it will be down at Aiken Ebenezer Church, which is down on Richland, 1114 Richland Avenue. So, any of you want to come? We appreciate it. Ms. Price, we did get those, we did talk to the people that you had us in contact with. We're trying to work with them to get them a job. We're working with those. So, we are, I mean, you keep on giving the people to us. We'll start working with them. So, we are so thankful, and thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
Contact us, we can work with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, before you leave, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you personally. They did telephone and told me how quickly you responded to them, and I thank you for that because that gave them a peace of mind. They'd called other folks and no response at all. They were forwarding them to another person or another person, but your rapid response really demonstrated that people care, especially you, so.
Well, that's one thing that we do, and I know that I'm over time, but we do care. I mean, that's the whole point of it. Plus, with the Hope Team, like I said, that's an Aiken thing. We're just a part of the Hope Team. Aiken is the Hope Team. So, we've got other ministries and other outreaches. Eyes on Aiken and other ministries that are coming together to do this. If I have a problem, I can call these people and they're going to help us to do this. So, don't hesitate to call. If you don't have my number, I'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to Eyes on Aiken for their involvement with the Lost Sheet Ministries, and I hear good things about how you guys are collaborating on different housing efforts, and we are so appreciative of you and all that you do as well. Thank you.
Let me just add, there's a teaming effort going on. They're working together as partners, and that's what it takes. No one person can do it all, and teaming, working together, works.
Good evening to Mayor Milner and members of the Aiken County Council, Aiken City Council. My name is Sam Fuller. I'm the principal at South Aiken High School. I have Ms. Angela Moore, who is the principal of Aiken High School. And we are returning to speak this evening to address the continuing issue of student use of electronic cigarettes in our schools and to seek your assistance possibly limiting student access to vapes. Some of you may better identify electronic cigarettes by the Monica Vapes, and there is a signage that is emblazoned upon local stores. In coordination with the Aiken Center, I want to bring you evidence of the issue that is currently going in our schools. This bin was delivered to South Aiken High School and all the other Aiken County schools on September 9th, 2024. And in it are all the tobacco-specific vapes we have confiscated from September 9th until today. This does not include the THC vapes, as they are taken in possession of law enforcement when they are confiscated. Just to be clear, tobacco usage is not a new trend among our youth. However, vape usage has dramatically changed the dynamics of access and prevention. And I want to be abundantly clear, I am asking for your assistance and not casting responsibility on the council. Vapes have been and continue to be targeted towards our youth with the intent of getting them addicted at a young age before their brains are fully developed. This targeting was identified in 2022 with the Food and Drug Administration shutting down sales of Juul brand for their intentional marketing to teenagers. And how else would you explain vape flavors such as blueberry watermelon, Blow Pop, and orange creamsicle, just to name a few? Another indicator of the targeting is vapes being sold with video games installed on them. We no longer encounter traditional cigarettes, and the last one we saw at South Aiken was in the spring of 2019. I recognize that the Aiken City Council doesn't have the ability to remove vaping products altogether. However, what I'm asking for is the Aiken City Council to become a trendsetter in the state and possibly in the nation in two ways. First, in adopting zoning ordinances for stores whose primary purpose is to sell tobacco vapes, CBDs, and loose tobacco products. South Carolina law 61-6-120 states that liquor stores are not permitted within 300 feet of schools, churches, or playgrounds, and we would like to see the same distance restriction mandated for vape shops. At this time, we have a vape shop within 100 feet of our campus, and within a half-mile walk, there are five. My second request is for the Aiken City Council to advocate for strengthened legal and financial consequences for selling of vapes to underage students. There has been various legislation entertained at the state level, but all this legislation is stalled at the moment. In conclusion, let me reiterate and be unequivocally clear. The vaping issue is not the fault of our Aiken City Council, and let me be the first to commend you for the work you are doing as public servants. I too serve the people and understand that sometimes thankless requirements of your work, so please do not review my remarks as any sort of indictment of your efforts. I am simply requesting your support moving forward. And with that being said, let me say thank you for listening to me and for considering these requests, and thank you for your commitment to safe communities and healthy families. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see both of you, and thank you for the work you are doing. And it's so good to see my little Cabbage Patch kid serving as principal of Aiken High School. Yeah, she don't tell anybody about that. Yeah, she was my little cancer crusader back in the 80s.
I have a question to ask.
Locking on doors in Crosland Park, collecting money for the Cancer Society, and she did look like a little Cabbage Patch kid.
Would you like to come back up to the podium, please?
Did you say that there were two offenses for smoking the entire year of last year?
No, no, no. There has only been like traditional paper tobacco cigarette. We've only confiscated one and the last time was in the spring of two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Principal Fuller, how are you? So, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that vaping, the addictive tendencies to it, such as cigarettes. So, the high schools allow cigarette smoking in their courtyards, is that correct? Did they used to?
No.
Did they used to?
That was thirty, that was about thirty years ago.
Okay.
That was back when. Right. And that was.
Back then, I was in high.
I'm not gonna age anybody, so I don't know, so I don't.
No, I don't know.
I don't want to offend anybody, I don't know how long ago that.
I, I absolutely don't agree with you a hundred percent. I just wasn't sure because I haven't been in school in a little bit, so. And I, and I didn't know if there was a difference or whatever. But my, my question comes, if these vape stores are selling this to underage, because don't you have to be eighteen?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So, they're selling this and you guys know to underage individuals?
Well, the students tell us that they are buying it from the stores.
And so, I guess the question to my colleagues and, and to law enforcement and so forth and so on is that monitoring obviously needs to be a lot more strict if that's happening. I have heard that happens. I can't prove it, I don't know, I haven't seen it. But, you know, with that proximity to school, which is too close for comfort, in my opinion, what is being done to hold these facilities accountable when selling to underage? One, and two, we know what happens when alcohol is sold to an underage individual. So, is it consistent with the vaping or no?
As far as we can tell, no. I have talked, spoken to DHEC and I've also tried to speak with this, uh, different people within the state, uh, SLED and all that to try and set up sting buys, to try and get students to go in that, that we know, that we know who they are, to conduct those buys and all of that. But like I said, there's a lot of legislation that isn't there. At the state level, there is legislation there. There are a number of different things that are popping up. And I'm, I'm, one thing about me as a principal, I'm gonna be transparent. Right now, there are new THC and, what's the, what's the hallucinogenic mushroom drinks? That are being sold and can be sold.
In a regular store.
In a regular store, next to orange juice, and there is no age restriction.
Wow.
So, all these things are popping up and this legislation is behind in all of these things. So, again, that's why I say I want to make sure I'm not indicting anybody. A lot of this stuff is coming up and we are, and this, we're just behind on it and we're trying to get ahead of it. And so, that's what we're coming asking about.
And the state held a, a session in the last week about this. And a lot of these stores went up there, the small business owners that own them, to advocate on their behalf. And the, the biggest thing I heard was, you know, this is a great tool for people that are addicted to smoking. If you're like thirties, forties, fifties, to, you know, not smoke anymore. And, and okay, that makes sense, but it, what doesn't make sense is a child pursuing an item where they can become addicted. You're right, their frontal lobes aren't even developed yet and, and then meddle with all these other things. So, I encourage you guys to please take what you're telling us because it is impactful to those sessions which are being held at the state level. So, I, maybe, maybe I can, we can get together or whatever, but you, you guys have to go and please advocate because they're trying to legislate for this right now.
So, last year, we, as principals, signed a letter to our legislators, uh, asking for some of the same things. And we, we, we have called and, and done, so, like I said, it's, I know there's a lot going on, so I understand that piece. Because there's, there's so much and it's so new. And like you say, the frontal lobes, people saying this for people that are addicted to smoking and trying to get off of it. The flavors. The flavors are, blow pop favorite, um, blow pop flavor is not marketed to a fifty-year-old.
That's right.
It's not.
Yeah. I wish you had heard that, that session. I mean, it was, it would have blown your mind, but I, I, again, they're trying to legislate that currently, right now. And, and you guys need to get in front of them.
I, I'm wondering, you, you're here sharing that information with us. And I asked myself, what can we do as a body? And whether, as a body, can we pass a resolution with the concerns that we have within our community? What, what do you suggest at this point and get it?
So, I am not a lawmaker, so I don't want to go too deep into that.
Okay.
I'll give you an example that I've seen. I live in Burnett Town. And so, in Burnett Town, for that area, you cannot buy alcohol in a grocery store on a Sunday. That's not the case everywhere, but in Burnett Town, that is the case. So, something similar to that, to, again, I'm not a lawmaker, so I don't know the restrictions and all that. That's just an example I've seen of something that is some example.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna get some information.
Help to move it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening, Lex.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Lex Perry, fifteen twenty-six South Boundary Avenue, and pastor of C four Impact. I just want to give you a quick update. Last time I was here, I shared with you that we started our transitional home project. It is progressing well. We do have four apartments that are open and we have five residents that are currently there in our program, helping them to start on this process, how appropriate this month, fair housing, to get them on the path to having self-sufficiency and having their own place. Things are going very well thanks to the assistance that you're giving us and the partnerships that we have with the ministries there. Izon Aiken, Lost Sheet Ministries, Overflow Foundation is another group that we're now starting to work with when it comes to behavioral health. It really does take a community and I just wanted to let you know that we are connecting and this, it is, the, the partnerships are getting stronger. And I just wanted to let the community know, because I know that there's some comments that have been made, say, hey, if you build it, they will come, with implying that if you set up transitional housing or something like that to help the homeless, it's gonna increase the homeless. Nothing could be further from the truth. As a matter of fact, that's just a blanket false statement. It's silly, to be honest with you. What this is going to do is going to assist us to get people to be self-sufficient on their feet, to be active members in this community, because that's what the majority of the people that we meet want to do. Yes, there are those who can't, but that's why we want to partner with the appropriate organization to give them the assistance that they need. And we are actively doing that, again, with your continued help. In the community, if they want to know how to help, you know, sheets for twin beds that we could use, you know, blankets, pillowcases. We provide it, pots and pans. We basically setting up the apartments like little mini Airbnb's. Is that to make it luxury? No, it's just to make sure that they have the right start. And we actually show them how to use their equipment, because if you've been on the streets for a long time, you're in a survival mode. You don't know what to do. You don't know how to handle these things because you haven't done it in a while. So, we provide these things, not for them to take it with them, but at least they can get a start. And then we'll be able to launch them into self-sufficiency when they get their own place. I've had some wonderful interviews with candidates that are coming in and there, there are starting to be more. I'm praying that this becomes a model for other organizations to do the same thing within our community. Remember, we don't want to look at people, look down on them, saying, oh, well, they're homeless, this, that, and the other. No, there are brothers and sisters here within this community. They've, they, they are homeless for a lot of different reasons. And to be honest with you, there's quite a few people in Aiken, they're only maybe a couple of paychecks away from being homeless themselves. I think we all know that. And so, before we get high and mighty and start to think or get self-righteous about things, we want, again, look with a loving, with a loving heart towards those who are out there and just really, just think twice about it. There is resources out there available. You can call us, like, like Kurt said, give us a call. We, we have a calling on our lives to be boots on the grounds for you. We can, we can partner together. If you don't feel like you can go out and do it, that's fine. Please come by the apartments and have a look at what we're doing and how it's going. You're welcome at any time. We would love to show you around and give you more details about what we're doing. But anytime, God bless and I thank you again for your help.
Thank you, Lex. Yes, sir.
Hello. Good evening, Aiken City Council. Myself, Aluk Kumar Akse. I live at three fifty-five Rubiz Drive, Aiken, South Carolina. Thank you for this opportunity to give me to speak to you. I am the owner at Taj Aiken Indian Cuisine at two one three Richland Avenue. I'm here to ask that you consider granting our business a five-year lease. Taj Restaurant serves authentic Indian cuisine. I employ twelve workers. We have hundreds of regular customers. We are a profitable, successful business since two thousand seventeen. We learned into November twenty twenty-one that the city was buying our property and was going to demolish our building and forced us, forced us to move elsewhere. Since December twenty twenty-one, the city Aiken has been our landlord, just like the Vampire Penguin and the other Wornake Cleaners and other businesses. We had to, we had no peace of mind after Project Pascalis was begin. Mr. Tim O'Brien, the old guy, he, he, he tells us he, he gonna give assistance to relocate, but that assistance was not enough for us to move. We could not find another suitable space for a restaurant in downtown. Still, I signed the relocation agreement and waited to see what will be happening in the future. But then Project Pascalis was canceled. I thought maybe I could buy my building from the city and sign, or sign the long lease from the city. Then the Savannah River Laboratory project came and the city wanted us, city wanted to build a building around us. And then Mr. Walt said that the Taj Aiken will be stayed at the place. And Mr. Mahidi told me like they won't be in that space, want the restaurant in that place. But we were hopeful, we invested more in our business. Then we were told the laboratory needed some of our space. Mr. Tim and Mr. Osborne said the city will move us to next door at the playoffs, the old playoff building, at the city's expenses. But then the city decided to build the lab on Newbury Street to, next to the restaurant. Then Vampire Penguin and Ginger Bee were given five-year leases one year ago in two thousand twenty-four and gained some peace of mind and I became more hopeful. I, I thought the five-year lease will be give me, I talked to Mr. Stewart, Mr. Mummy's mayor, and I sign, they told me to sign the lease, I'd like other businesses, they signed. I signed it and I signed back to them in last year, two thousand February twenty twenty-four. And I delivered to the office and I got, I was told to check back again in, in, after some time. I checked back in April, in June, in July, and September, then we got hit by the Helena. And I check back again every month, I go every month and I talk to the Mr. also there. So, the now, my building is part of the big project and I don't know about the future, what gonna happen in the future. So, I just wanted to opportunity by overbuilding like the Newbury Hall did. Or if it's not possible, maybe you can give us a long-term lease so I can be, be calm and my workers there, we cannot go anywhere or something. So, just, I like to be where I am right now and my customers, they like where we are right now. And I'm just asking you, requesting you to all give us a lease or if you can sell the, that part or corner part, I can bring another businesses there, another small restaurant, a small store.
Thank you.
Something like this.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Mayor, I had the pleasure of meeting this gentleman at Family Dollar Store. And we just got in a conversation and, and I sort of recognized him and asked him, was he the, the owner of Taj? And we got in the discussion. He's very concerned about where the restaurant will be relocated, if it has to be. And, 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 and he's, he just needs some answers as to where it is. He could possibly go so that he can start making plans and I understand that, I think we all understand that. So, as soon as we know, you'll know, definitely.
The thing is, I'm not fighting guy, I'm requesting guy. I always, I always talk politely with everyone and that's my culture. So, I always request, you know, I don't demand like other people, hey, give me that, give me that, no. I'm just requesting to, for me, and we, we have put many efforts there. I have, basically, I have put many efforts, my employees and everyone. And all people, they come in Aiken, so they like the small town. I want, I wish, as I'm Aiken resident, that this town will be smaller, not like the big buildings, not like Manhattan. Something smaller or something like that. So, please consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Jacob Ellis, Aiken, South Carolina. Kumar is a pillar of our community. Whenever a situation happens, may it be natural or man-made, Kumar and his team are the first to be outside their store, outside their restaurant, offering free meals to people maybe in need, maybe not. It, they don't care, they don't discriminate. They are there to help this community. The least we can do is offer him an extended lease, the opportunity to buy his building like we have done for numerous other buildings in the Pascalis block. Not only is Taj an Aiken institution, and I don't use that lightly because we don't have many left, but it is a historic property and building being the original home of our Aiken Standard newspaper. So, the least we can do to repay Kumar and his team is to give him the opportunity for an extended lease or to buy the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jacob, I'd, I'd like to say, you mentioned how they're always the first one when people are in need. Well, I had the opportunity to witness him in action that very same day that I met him. There was two of our patients outside of Family Dollar. They've been homeless, elderly couple, they've been homeless for quite a while. And I walked over to them to see if I could buy them a meal or anything, do anything for them. And I just happened to reach in my purse and get a few dollars because I had already contacted Lost Sheet Ministry to come and get them. And I got back in my car and I witnessed him get out of his truck. He know it, he didn't know them. And he walked over to them and he gave them money. And they were just trying to talk to him and thank you. And it was nothing to him, I could tell he's done it before. So, this man has a big heart. He, he really touched me that day.
Kumar is a fantastic person.
Right.
And I say a big pillar of our community with a deep following. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We now have approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. Council has this evening for consideration the appointment of Lizzie Boyer to the Arts Commission and the reappointments of Kenna Black to the Accommodations Tax Committee and the reappointment of Laura Thomas to the Senior Commission.
Is there a motion to accept these nominations? That would be Council, Councilman Waltz.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
A second from Councilwoman Broll. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
I've got a comment, but it's in reference to a missing commission in this packet. Is planning commission usually in here?
Yes, but I think if they don't have any vacancies, we would not list, or excuse me, if they don't have any expired appointments, they are not always in there if they're, all appointments are current.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Motion passed. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting? Okay, I guess not. So, the next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to Annex one twenty-two Vivian Drive and zone it RS fifteen, residential single family. Mr. Beedenbo.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance to Annex Property Located at one two two Vivian Drive and to Zone the Same Residential Single Family RS fifteen." The applicants and owners have requested annexation of approximately three-fifths of an acre. and zone it residential, single family RS fifteen, which is consistent with surrounding properties. All those present at the Planning Commission voted to recommend it be annexed and zoned RS fifteen, as did city council approve it at the March twenty-fourth meeting. It is before you for second and final reading this evening.
Madam Mayor, since this is in my district, I'll gladly make the motion to annex this.
I'll second.
All right. The next item under Old Business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone seven twenty-four Richland Avenue West from Limited Professional to Office Institutional. Mister Beedenbow.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled an ordinance to amending the zoning of real estate owned by Richland Office LLC from Limited Professional LP to Office O. It is approximately thirty-four hundredths of an acre near the intersection of Richland Avenue West and Morgan Street. Office Institutional um allows for a wide range of professional offices, institutions, selected service uses and where appropriate residential uses. It is also intended to be a used along major thoroughfares. This fits in with the comprehensive plan. The rezoning would allow retail use as well as commercial services use. All present at the March eleventh Planning Commission approved the rezoning. City Council approved the rezoning for first reading on March twenty-fourth. The proposed use at this time would be a antique and similar type store and it's before you for second and final reading this evening.
So move, Madam Mayor, since it's on the west side, uh northwest side, I should say, um that we adopt this on second reading.
Councilwoman Price.
I second.
And Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. The next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone forty point twenty-five acres on Kershaw Street, York Street, Rudy Mason Parkway and Beaufort Street from RS ten, single-family residential to planned residential and approve a concept plan. Mister Beedenbow.
Thank you. It is an ordinance to rezone property located on Kershaw Street, northeast York Street, northeast Rudy Mason Parkway and Beaufort Street from single-family residential RS ten to planned residential PR and approve the proposed concept plan. In January twenty twenty-four, council approved a request for rezoning approximately twenty-five and a third acres of a portion of this parcel or of this property. Um and a concept plan was approved for twenty-six single-family residences in a commercial out parcel. The condition was not met to allow the applicant to acquire the property, so the approval went away. The current request adds an adjacent parcel to bring it to approximately forty and a quarter acres, along with approval of a concept plan for two hundred two single-family lots with no commercial component. This falls under the purview of planned residential zoning, which requires a concept plan reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by city council. This does fit in with uh surrounding property. We went over um the property uh conditions. The Planning Commission voted three to one at their March twenty, uh excuse me, March eleventh meeting to approve this rezoning and concept plan. We talked about all the conditions at the last meeting that came out of the Planning Commission. As part of consideration of this ordinance at the March twenty-fourth meeting, there was amendments made to condition number four. It was amended to read. It was uh, the, as presented, it was that the developer complies with the required building separation. Council approved amending condition four to read quote that the developer has granted a waiver from zoning ordinance section four point two point three to allow a six and a half foot side setback and thirteen feet between structures for the southern neighborhood and a nine foot side setback and eighteen feet between structures in the northern neighborhood. And all of the other conditions recommended by planning uh stayed intact. And this was approved on first reading March twenty-fourth and is before council for second reading this evening.
Is there a motion?
I so moved. This is in District One.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion.
Second amendment.
Second, Councilwoman Price, second the motion. Are there any comments from the public? Good evening.
Good evening, uh Mayor Milner, members of city council and city staff. My name is Jason Raven. I reside at nine fifty-seven Oleander Drive, southeast Aiken, South Carolina, two-nine-eight oh one. Uh I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Mister Nor- Norman Dunagan, who regrets he was unable to attend tonight's meeting due to a complication and travel. Currently, I uh work for Norman as CFO and controller of his entities. Um and he's asked me to express his continued commitment to advancing a meaningful and much-needed initiative, the development of affordable workhouse, uh workforce housing on the north side of Aiken. Um the proposed development will include two hundred two residential lots thoughtfully planned to meet the growing demand for attainable housing for Aiken's essential workers, teachers, nurses, public safety officers and other vital members of this community. This product is also not readily available in this community as affordable and workforce. Importantly, the site is located within close proximity to Mister Dunagan's former business, the Dumpster Depot, which he recently sold. Having invested a significant amount of time um and money into this part of the community over the years, he is personally and professionally eager to see this area continue to grow and develop in a positive direction. The proposed site was selected for a strong connectivity located near key transportation routes, employment centers and existing infrastructure. Mister Dunagan and his team, who is here tonight, are committed to working closely with the city of Aiken, his planning department and public safety to align this effort with the city's broader goals for equitable growth, economic development and community li- community livability. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this project and associated waiver requests and welcome the opportunity to work together um in this moving forward. Thank you for your time and for your continued leadership.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Elgin. I live at one sixty-one Winged Elm Drive in Aiken. And I just would like to request, I cannot hear the voice, the voice votes. I would request a voice vote so that, and a total vote uh told to the audience.
Thank you. Would you want me to say the, the people after our, the with, uh votes or? How would you, you, are you?
So you're the student.
Raise your hand.
You could say like three in favor, one opposed or?
Okay, thank you. Uh any other comments from the public? Comments from council?
I just have one question, Mayor, if that's okay. Do we know um the rationale or the reason why Commissioner Reynolds opposed?
So Ryan texted me after the fact, after the meeting to just inform me that he was against the the motion that passed at Planning Commission due to the fact that he didn't, he didn't want to leave it as it was written. He, he requested that the waiver actually be included, that there would be a waiver granted, I guess, would be the better way of saying that. So the Charles, I think Charles.
He didn't want it the way it was.
Wanted it to proceed as it was, the developer complies with the required building separation period and not that there would be a waiver um granted.
So he, he wanted it to just say the developer complies with the required building separation?
Mister Matthews, who made the motion, wanted that. Ryan was opposed to that. He was okay with the setback being modified with the waiver.
So that was.
So he opposed Charles's motion.
So he opposed.
Seconded it.
As it was.
As it was before we made.
But then he would have.
Before we made the amendment, is that what happened?
Y'all made the amendment.
Came, we did.
Correct. Before we made the amendment, that was.
Is that right?
Ri- Ryan. Commissioner Reynolds made, was opposed before we made the amendment.
No. Right, that's right. Ryan wanted to include it.
Um yeah, amendment number four is what Commissioner Reynolds wanted as a condition because condition number four says the opposite, the, what planning sent us is that they comply with the separation.
And I'm very squeaky clean clear as to what we wanted.
Fair.
So I'm just, it's not clear here what he opposed, but you guys just clear, clarify that. So I guess that's fine. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Uh all those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you.
Was it unanimous?
Oh unanimous, sorry.
Madam Mayor, if I might add something really quickly, Kevin, uh Chris and Kevin, I, and I know you all don't want the flowery things, the praises. You are very humble uh men. But I thank you all for what you are doing for the homeless. I know that you all had leased spaces for shelter for these individuals. And I just want to say thank you and thank you for what you, your church is doing too, to help the homeless population.
Next, we have second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex fifty-one point sixty-one acres on May Royal Drive and Osborne Drive, zone it planned professional and approve a concept plan. Mister Beedenbow.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled an ordinance to annex the corporate limits of the city of Aiken, to the corporate limits of the city of Aiken. Certain property located on May Royal Drive and Osborne Drive and to zone the same PR planned residential and approve the proposed concept plan. April of twenty twenty-four, council passed an ordinance approving annexation and concept plan approval for a two hundred and fifty lot, single-family subdivision on approximately ninety-one point one-four acres on May Royal Drive to be zoned from R U D to planned develop, planned residential. The approval included an annexation condition that the property is acquired by the applicant within six months. And since the condition was not met, um that uh approval went away. Um subsequent to that also, the uh, one of the parcels that was involved, um that owner withdrew it um from this proposed development plan. So therefore, the applicant has filed another request for annexation and submitted a revised concept plan for a smaller one hundred and eighty-five lot, single-family subdivision on fifty-one, on approximately fifty-one point six-one acres. Initially, the initial proposal back in early twenty-four was for um, I believe around three hundred and thirty homes. So um this, uh as in the original proposal, the existing house that has a May Royal address would remain in, as an isolated pocket of county jurisdiction within the development boundaries with its continued driveway access to May Royal. Again, given the size of the parcel, uh the planned residential zoning is what um it needs to comply with. So we had discussion at the last meeting regarding much of this property. There were a number of conditions that the Planning Commission unanimously voted to approve a concept plan along with multiple conditions that were read into the record at the last council meeting. Several things, um the planning director does recommend we consider this cross-access easement. And approved, uh at first reading, this was approved with the following amendments to conditions which are shown on the screen uh with strike throughs with the old language and underlining with the new language. Paragraph two was amended to read quote, "The required landscaped entrance median shall be as wide as possible but not wider than fifteen feet in width, taking into consideration all of the infrastructure that is required in the entrance area." And paragraph seven is amended to read quote, "That a six-foot privacy, privacy fence be installed along the back of each lot that is not adjacent to currently existing homes and an eight-foot fence be installed behind each lot that is adjacent to currently existing homes and along the side of each lot, bordering the entrances in compliance with the zoning ordinance." Paragraph eight is deleted. Paragraph nine is amended to read quote, "That a right-of-way easement is extended from the cul-de-sac to the undeveloped parcel to the south and to the undeveloped parcel to the west that fronts on Columbia Highway North." A new condition was added to read quote, "That the maximum density be allowed up to one hundred eighty-nine lots." That was approved at first reading by city council on March twenty-fourth and is before you with those amended conditions today for second reading.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
Uh I move that we vote to approve this with those conditions that have been put on here and that our city manager read into the record that are annotated in our notes.
I second.
Okay, Councilwoman uh Broll made the motion and Councilwoman Diggs second the motion.
Stuart, this is still including the eight-foot fence rather than the six-foot, right?
Six-foot around the.
It, it is uh the, it is amended um in paragraph seven that it has a six-foot along the back of each lot, not adjacent to current existing homes, but an eight-foot fence be installed behind each lot, adjacent to currently existing homes and along the side of each lot, bordering the entrances to be in compliance, in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Uh any comments from the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Mayor of City Council, first I must compliment you all on your starring role in the movie. But um I just wanted to get one, when I was here last week, or last time.
You want to speak up loud, I think there.
Ma'am, okay. We asked for, I asked for an eight-foot vinyl fence. I don't know whether I got misunderstood or not, but anyway, that's what I'm asking for, is an eight-foot vinyl fence on the houses that are existing on May Royal Drive.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
That one says wooden fence, I think.
It does not specify material, it just specifies the height.
We need his name and address. Could we have your name and address, please, sir?
Larry Bowling at five forty May Royal Drive.
Thank you.
I'm right beside one of the.
Thank you.
Emergency entrance.
You can ask the builder.
I don't know, we can ask the builder.
Uh, any other, yes sir.
Thank you, mayor and council. Jason Winkter with Ivy Development, 672 Industrial Park Drive, Evans, Georgia. Just a quick recap, we are, we will be the developer and builder and real estate company for this. We're working with the Gibsons on this one. But going forward, we will, we'll be the developer and builder. There was one item that I think probably just got lost in the conversation that we had last time. In paragraph number seven, Planning Commission added in a condition that a privacy fence be installed along both sides of the entrance coming into this project. So just to give you a little context, the, the entrance is 50 feet wide. So that would be the entire right-of-way of that entrance. And so I think what they were, there was a comment from the adjacent current residents to this entrance that wanted a privacy fence built along the property line, all the way down. And so that got added in. So if we build a, a privacy fence, it's going to be within the right-of-way. And I'm just not sure that council understands that that condition puts that fence in the right-of-way. Just wanted to bring that up. We would respectfully ask to have that condition removed. I mean, we're happy to build the privacy fence around the perimeter of the development like we talked about before behind the houses that we build, but building it down that 50-foot strip on either side is, is, it's already tight. Right now, we have probably five feet of shoulder. I did a little sketching since the last meeting and to do a, I just used an eight-foot median to, to go with and then 12 and a half foot lane, curb and gutter on both sides, and then you end up with a five and a half foot shoulder that you got to get a water main down, AT&amp;T, power, and then Comcast or another, you know, fiber provider. So there's not a lot of room. So just want to clarify that if we move forward with that condition, that fence will be in the right-of-way.
Is that on our conditions? That's not on our condition.
That's part of number seven. The way I understand it, the last part of that sentence.
Are you referring to the part that says bordering the entrances?
And along the side of each lot bordering the entrances.
Ah, okay. So there may need to, we may need to clarify that, but the intention was not to put that on the right-of-way. We obviously don't want the fence in the right-of-way.
No.
The thought process is he could work with the property owners to place something on their property. He would probably have to come up with some sort of a maintenance agreement with each, each of the property owners, so it's clear who maintains these. But there's also a statement that it would comply with the zoning ordinance. So in other words, it would be actually not eight-foot, it would be six-foot, which is what we require in the zoning ordinance, and then past the front plane of the house, it would have to drop down to four feet. So our thought process that it would be on the, in the property owner's property line, not actually within the right-of-way. So I don't know if that clarifies that.
So I don't really know how we can agree to work on somebody else's property. That's, that's kind of hard for us to commit to.
That's where you'd have to have a prob, you would have to have a maintenance agreement written up with the property owner and you as a developer.
No, I, I understand, but how do we, how do we agree right now when the property owners aren't here to give us permission to work on their property? And that creates other issues with our guys going on a adjacent property owner, where they're never going to be happy with the work that's, that's, that's done. And it's, I mean, this may work out just perfect, but in, in, in my past experience, it's hard to please somebody that, you know, when we're working on somebody else's property. So it's either in the 50-foot that we own or it's on somebody else's property. And I don't know how we move forward by agreeing to building something on somebody else's property as part of the conditions. So I would prefer just to have it removed. And again, we'll build fences around the rear of the lots that we build on. We just won't have a fence.
What would, what would the timeline be for the building of the fence? Aren't you going to build these fences before you sell lots?
We would, we would build the fences as we build the houses.
All right. But you'll own the lots until you sell them to the, to the owners.
Correct.
Whoever's going to buy them from you. But I mean, you'll have ownership of those lots until the lots are sold. I mean, you're, you're actually able to build within your own lot at that point.
Can we bring up a map? Is it possible to bring up a map? Cause I think we're, we're thinking two different things. We're talking about the actual entrance from May Royal Drive. Cause we only own a 50-foot strip. We have existing lots owned by other people on either side.
Okay, already owned by somebody else.
Yeah, there are houses, existing houses there now.
Okay. I guess I would need to see the map to help understand.
Let's pull one up now that's-
You want us to hand it to you?
You want to see page 100 and, Sarah, it's page 137.
Or 138, yeah.
Yep, 100, yep. If you could scroll, Sarah. Is that Gary? Gary, you need to scroll, you need to scroll to the right pa, correct page, which is about 15 pages further into the document from where we are.
Excuse me, is the entrance Sperry Drive?
No.
That page with the salmon color, right there, yes. If you could highlight that.
That's the one.
Oh, it's proposed to be, yes. Proposed name.
I'm sorry, it's the page right above it, the, the page right above it, Gary. There you go, that one.
It actually be Woodvale.
So the, the two lots, I've got the pointer. The, the way I understand the recommendation or the condition from Planning Commission was a privacy fence along that property line and a privacy fence along this property line. So those are lots that we do not own, it's not part of this development.
Okay.
Do I need to point those out? Everybody see those?
So your, the fence would have to be within your, the, the land that you own.
They would not be. Weren't this lot and this lot are, are not in, as part of this project.
Okay. Are, are those lots developable?
They've got houses on both of them.
So there's existing houses there now?
Yes, sir. Existing houses.
Have, have you talked with the two property owners?
I have not.
And Mr. Bowling, you're one of those property owners, I believe.
This one?
That one. Thank you.
Which we're not putting entrance there.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree with you on that.
See how the builder can do that?
Well, I mean, if the, if the, if the property owner for either one of those two parcels tells him, "Go pound sand," then he's kind of stuck with that without knowing whether they're amenable to doing that or not. I mean, he is confined to his own property that he owns. Are those lot, those lots are, those lots were developed in the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
They're not, they're not in the city, right? Okay.
Can we just remove that condition?
You can. I would like to hear from, I'd like for you to hear from Maria as to why she doesn't want to remove that condition if she has a, if she has a reason.
Actually, I just think that it needed to be discussed. Honestly, I'm good either way.
Yep, okay. He would have to be within his property line. And that property line's going to be all right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
What you're telling us.
That's definitely not something we would want.
Yeah. That's something he can work out separately with them if, if he comes up.
And putting that fence there is going to, I don't think it's going to be a good look to come into the-
No, I agree, I agree. But I'm just saying.
But what he's asking for is annexation into the city, which we have control over. We don't have control over any of that.
Right.
So. Well, yeah, I don't know that we meant to leave that in there. This is, this is my motion.
Well-
I can amend it, correct?
You may. And you could, you could, you, you have two options. One is to delete the language in paragraph seven referring to the fence at the entrance area. Or two is to, as Mr. Waltz is suggesting, table the discussion to have conversations with those two people. But that could be an open-ended conversation and you never know where that might end up.
I amend it to remove number seven. Did you second? Are you, well, are you okay with that?
To, to remove, to amend, amend paragraph seven to remove the requirement for a fence at the entrance.
Because he does not, you know, that's not his property.
So it would read that a six-foot privacy fence be installed along the back of each lot that is not adjacent to currently existing homes. And then delete the rest of the language?
No.
You got an eight-foot fence.
Then, then delete the phrase, quote, "And an eight-foot fence be installed behind each lot that is adjacent to currently existing homes."
Excuse me. Just the last section that would say, "And along the side of each lot bordering the entrances in compliance." That's the only portion.
So just delete the last, after the last "and," delete "and along the side of each lot bordering the entrances." Okay.
And, and Maria, just so I'm clear, the language that says, "In compliance with the zoning ordinance," that was referring to fences along the entrance ways.
That is correct.
So that whole, from-
That whole phrase, after the, after existing homes, delete everything.
Correct.
Yep.
And that's in condition seven.
That's my amendment.
Does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about his property?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh-
That's fine.
There's no street-
Excuse me, Larry Bowling, 540 May Royal Drive.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll have to, another time. You cannot come up twice in the same.
Okay.
He didn't know this was going to change completely.
You're not supposed to. Let me, council can-
Yeah, sorry. Yes, sir. We've had a pow-wow.
In the drawing, it shows there's a separation between the fence and the lot. And this right up here does not mention that 25 feet that we talked about at the last meeting between, that they were going to leave a 25-foot buffer between the homes that are existing now and the fence when they built it.
I thought-
Ma'am?
The road is closed. Second entrance.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a buffer between each lot on May Royal Drive and where they're going to put the fence, 25-foot buffer.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I believe that was discussed at the last council meeting. I don't believe council adopted that amendment to the conditions. And so that was discussed at the last meeting, but council did not adopt that amendment.
Can't hear.
Can't hear me? What I believe he was asking for was a buffer, and that the fence be built in a certain place. And that was discussed at the last council meeting and council chose not to adopt that amendment to the conditions. That was not approved at the last meeting, no sir.
But there's, there's still a driveway.
They did, they did increase the height of the fence to eight feet.
Mrs. Robinson owns separately that rectangle in the middle.
Right.
And she has a driveway, which if I'm mistaken, you'll, you talked about that too at the last meeting. Yes, come on. Cause where's Ms. Robinson?
She's right there.
Oh, okay. All right, good. You're here. What, what did we decide on the driveway for Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Williams.
Williams. It's confusing.
That we were in current discussions with her about purchasing, didn't have anything in writing yet. And that if we did not come to an agreement, we would do our best working with 911 and addressing to try to keep her May Royal address in place.
Right.
Provide access out that easement if you wanted it. It may change because of the way the road goes in and, and addressing that. I mean, that's out of our control. But the other thing I did mention is that there was a driveway easement put in place when that parcel was plotted back in, I think in the seventies, that if there was ever a public road built adjacent to her lot, that easement, that access easement goes away.
Okay.
And so that's one of the things we talked about and that's-
Right.
Ms. Williams and I have talked about that too before, so.
Okay, all right.
And didn't you also promise regardless she would not be landlocked?
No, she couldn't.
No, right. That's right. She, yeah, yes. We're not going to-
She didn't have to worry about-
We're not going to surround her with a fence and not let her in or out. No.
There you go.
We'll, we'll be good neighbors.
Okay.
So have we got a, a plan here?
Yes. We've got it.
Please tell us what it is.
The plan.
I amended it. We took number seven out. Gary, Counselor Smith reiterated so that they would understand that we didn't discuss what was brought up about the 25 feet. So it is as it stands as we amended it that was read earlier on our sheet. The only thing that was taken out is paragraph seven says a six-foot privacy fence be installed along the back of each lot, not adjacent to currently existing homes. Then the rest of that is knocked off, isn't deleted. So.
And thank you, Mr. Winkter, for clarifying, where'd you go? Oh, for clarifying that, that, okay.
And sorry, Ms. Williams. I got, I got it, I got it now.
She will be able to get in and out of her property.
Yes, we discussed that.
Were, were, comments from council?
Well, is everybody through? Okay.
Do we need to?
Well, I didn't think so. You still got-
Yes, sir. Sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand earlier.
That's okay. I just did raise my hand. So it wasn't up earlier. My name is Don Montiak. I just noticed in the ordinance that there's no condition for that 25-foot buffer. And it was discussed earlier. And as I'm not, I'm not mistaken, 25-foot is greater than 10-foot, which is what the zoning ordinance requires. So there's no condition in the ordinance that says it'll be a 25-foot buffer. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for clarity, there is a perimeter buffer around, that's noted on the concept plan. So he has a minimum, in some cases it's 10, in some cases it's, he's stating a minimum of 25. In some cases it's going to be more. So there is, there is a perimeter buffer on the concept plan.
And repeat that, the perimeter buffer is how many?
That, that's the open space. It's around the, the outside of the, if we could pop it up, I think it shows. But he's got it labeled that there is, some areas have 10-foot, some areas have a minimum of 25 feet, but in many cases it may actually be more. So there is a perimeter buffer.
So it's a min, so the minimum buffer is 10 feet?
The minimum buffer is 10 feet, but he's, in this case, he's got some areas that have more, 25-foot or more.
Okay.
And that's right. As, as adopted, and when you adopt the concept plan, that would-
I remember him saying that at the last-
Thank you. I actually had a resident text me, so I was asking on his behalf.
He said it just depended on how, when he cleared the land, it would be a minimum of 10 feet and maybe up to 25 feet, as I remember. Was that correct?
Correct, possibly more.
And could be more in some spots.
Correct.
From the public. Yes, sir.
My name's George Whitehill and I live at 1151 Osborne Drive. Apologize for my last episode up here. I rushed out in a hurry, but my back was hurting so bad, I could not hardly even think straight. But I'm a little better tonight, so bear with me, please. I'm, I'm getting a good bit confused here. We, uh-
We are.
Yeah, I think so. But we've started through this thing with the previous plan. Now we're on this plan. And on the previous plan, it was supposed to be an eight-foot fence, privacy fence, all the way around the entire perimeter of this thing. If, all you got to do is go back to the planning note- If, all you gotta do is go back to the planning notes and all that and, and see, that's what it was supposed to be. And they agreed to it. And there was supposed to be a seventy-five-foot buffer on most of it and part of it behind Mr. Thomas's house. The way things shaped up, you couldn't get seventy-five feet there without cutting off like two or three houses. But that's what had already been agreed upon in the last thing, so I, I kinda hope and think that we, that's what our starting point should be, rather than start somewhere else. We're just, keeps, at a moving target, it seems like. And there's, was not gonna be any access onto Osborne Drive except like an emergency entrance and exit. And it would be down at, at Aldrich. If I'm, am I correct in that?
It's close to Aldrich. You are correct.
Okay, okay. So what about it, what about the eight-foot fence and then the, that perimeter?
That changed in this, that, that changed in this iteration. Were you involved in the first one at all? Yeah, this is a whole new subdivision, a whole different process.
With same people, just-
It's the owners, I guess.
Smaller, smaller piece of land, so you got less houses, but it's, you know, they're trying to develop it.
Right, well, they, the negotiations, I thought we had things nailed down and, you know,
is it gonna be a case where, well, we're just gonna nibble at this thing until we finally get enforced all these people into what we want them to have, you know?
That's-
And I'm, I'm really hurt because of being, going through the negotiations and talks and coming up here and-
It up, is that doing that perimeter would involve property that is not owned by the developer?
No, no, no. The property that they were, that's why I say this whole thing, everybody's getting confused. The property that they initially started talking about a while ago was only on the entrance coming in. The one lot on that side and the one lot on this side, with the space that they had, they didn't think they had room to put a fence without encroaching on that particular person's property. That was only at the entrance to the subdivision.
But if you do the perimeter, are you on the outside or inside of those perimeter properties that are county?
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm asking that question. No, I'm, I'm then, I'm, yeah, these are county properties. So he's talking about putting a fence on the perimeter, which, again, they're not properties part of this development. Am I, am I wrong?
But just those two lots, I, I-
Yeah, but if it's per, the fence would go right there. What, what part of, can you explain to us what, what the perimeter consists of?
Around the neighborhood.
Correct.
Around the subdivision.
So that perimeter, would that fence be on your development property or those county properties? Just the way it's encroaching on the entrance, what's the deal with the perimeter?
The-
Are they encroaching there as well?
The fence would be at the property line of the homeowners.
Correct.
Not at the, not at the property line of the big piece of property.
Okay, so that, so the- That you own, that Jason owns, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
That Jason, the, excuse me, that the developer owns. See, that's the part I think that's just ambiguous, is I don't think everybody understands what encompasses the perimeter.
Okay, is it?
Yeah.
I'll see, okay. The perimeter is this right here.
Not, see-
The line right, and that's the buffer area right in there that had been said originally was gonna be seventy-five feet. And I, now it's down to ten and we're gonna go back to twenty-five somewhere, but originally, they had agreed to seventy-five feet.
As a buffer.
This, uh, part, this part right in here is where they were gonna hard, a hard time getting seventy-five feet in there, because it would, it would cut off some houses right through there because of the way Mr. Thomas's lot is, is shaped.
Have you got that in writing? Is that written down anywhere?
Well, I've got the email kind of thing that I sent to the, uh, D and it's into, it's in the notes and stuff of all the meetings that have been had, you know, the, uh-
If I- I'm asking, it's written down somewhere.
Mr. Waltz, if I may, if I, if I understand his comments, he's, he's comparing this application to the previous application that was approved by council over a year ago. That application has gone away.
Gotcha.
So, so we're talking about a new, this new application has absolutely nothing to do with the first application.
Yeah.
Understand that, other than the fact that we went through a negotiation and was promised-
But that's gone.
That's gone.
I understand that it's gone, but why, why does it have to be gone? Why can't we get it back?
Because this is the application that he's brought to us.
It's a new concept plan.
Do we get it back?
And I believe the eight-foot fence was prohibitive in cost and it was also not as attractive as a six-foot fence. Is that, didn't we all agree that eight feet is kind of prohibitive around and not necessary around?
So, so I-
If it's that, then it can-
Are you looking at page one, one thirty-six? One thirty-six shows you the property that they are using.
I know, I know what the perimeter is. I don't think everybody's on the same page, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, well, okay, I mean, it's been-
And the fact that this is the new-
Can, can we hear from Maria, please?
Completely new plan. I'm just wanting to clarify maybe the location of the fence compared to, quote, the buffer.
Yes.
So for, for the developer to be able to maintain the fencing, it can't be on the outside.
Correct.
Which would be on county, basically county property. It has to be on the inside, which would be the new lots as they're built, that's where the fencing would be.
Right.
Um-
That's right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
The fence was gonna be built at the back of the property line of the home, the home, each homeowner there.
The new-
Back of their property line was where-
The new home.
Correct.
New homeowner. The nu, the new homeowner.
Yes, yes. Whoever buys lot A, you know, at the back of their lot, eight-foot fence, back there, and then, and that's where the buffer starts and goes to the other.
And that, that is not changing. Is that correct, Maria?
So the only thing that has changed is that for those that, the areas that don't back up to any existing lots, it's just down to six. But it is still eight feet if it is backs, if what's behind them is an existing home.
The houses would back up to, his house would be eight feet.
Eight feet, that is correct.
Seemed like it'd be easier just to make one down the whole, down that street that's got those, only two.
Okay.
Rather than, and they also had said that they would build a fence when they started the development. You know, so we don't have to look at the construction going on and all the heavy equipment noise and all that stuff. But, uh, anyway.
I think it's, it's the change that has, the change in development, the reduction of the number of homes that is being, is going to be built. That has caused, I don't wanna say confusion, but comparing the two of what was said early on and that went away and then starting with a new concept.
So help me understand, what is gonna be the buffer area around, around the, the development?
Minimum ten feet, but in most cases twenty-five feet or more.
And that hasn't changed.
Can't hear.
Ten feet, minimum.
Ten feet?
Minimum.
Minimum. And-
And, and possibly more.
If I have anything else, it's still not real clear, but.
Understand. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Now you call the question.
Call, question?
Um, ma'am, um, all those in favor? Oh, thank you. It is unanimous. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item under old business is second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to amend the city code section thirty-eight dash eight concerning the special real property tax assessments for rehabilitated historic properties.
Thank you. It is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending section thirty-eight dash eight of the Aiken City Code regarding special real property tax assessments for rehabilitated properties. We brought this forward based on some consultation and discussion with our, uh, Mr. Lewis, Robert Lewis, who advises us on these matters. And he recommended with some pro, some key properties that have been vacant for a number of years, including the old hospital, the nurses' quarters, the Johnson Drug Store and the Hotel Aiken, that we look to square up or, or make our so-called Bailey Bill more consistent with what the state code allows. Right now, we offer only a ten-year freezing of a property tax assessment. We would make it a twenty-year special property tax assessment for these historic redevelopment projects. We have partnered with Historic Aiken Foundation to get the hotel and the Johnson Drug Store and related properties onto the, um, through the South Carolina Archives and History, onto the National Register. The, uh, Mr. Gumpert, whose firm just redid the Warren Mill and has purchased the hos, old hospital, has put that old hospital and Nurses' Quarters building, gone through the same process through South Carolina Historic Preservation and the Department of Interior's program, Federal Department of Interior. So we have done the updates and this is for council's consideration for second reading this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor, that we adopt this.
Councilwoman Price made the motion.
Uh, I'll second.
Councilwoman, uh, Gerardo seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor?
Moving along.
It's a motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Stewart. Stewart?
Yes, sir.
Is that Robert Lewis, the attorney?
Yes, sir.
The final item under old business, second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to include opioid recovery funds. Mr. Beedenbow.
It is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five uh, for the general fund, Public Safety Department. We've recently received, uh, three hundred ninety-six thousand, a hundred and seventy dollars of opioid money to add to non-sworn response and prevention positions along with rel, relevant training vehicles, supplies and equipment. We, uh, we've been partnering with the Aiken Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, Aiken County, the Coroner's Office and City of North Augusta to work with these, um, uh, to, to treat these addiction issues. And the state of South Carolina, uh, over the next eighteen years expects to receive a large amount of money, billions of dollars, a portion will be prorata allocated to the city of Aiken. And this is sort of the first pot of money and we need to receive the funds via budget adjustment and is before you for second reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Gerardo made the motion and I need a second.
I second.
Uh, Councilwoman Diggs seconded the motion. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We now move to new business. We have one item under new business. It's an ordinance to amend the budget to cover increased sewer rates from Aiken County Public Service Authority. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. It is an ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five for the Water and Sewer Fund Sewer Distribution Division. We've talked, uh, you remember, in June, after we had set our budget for the year and, um, and, and water, adjusted water and sewer rates, we, um, received that the Public Service Authority in Aiken County increased rates effective July first, twenty twenty-four, sixty-five percent increase for operations and maintenance of the plant, uh, going from a dollar forty per thousand gallons to two thirty-one per thousand gallons. And pre-treatment costs increased from eight cents per gallon to nineteen cents per gallon and related administration charges increased to, uh, from eighty to a hundred and forty dollars per quarter. And, um, we have absorbed the costs, but obviously we are talking about moving forward as part of our budget, um, discussions that we had earlier today. And, uh, but we do wanna incur that and make a budget adjustment, um, for these current increases. And it's before you for first reading this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Brolle made the motion and a second from Councilwoman Gregory. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. We now move to petitions and requests. The first item is a request to approve a fireworks display on July fourth, twenty twenty-five at the Reserve Club of Woodside. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. We have received this annual request. The state fire marshal regulations require, uh, the council officially approves this each year and also to be in compliance with our city code. Fireworks show July fourth, uh, the mayor and I met today with representatives from Woodside Development who puts this on and, um, that, we've asked that they have some extra public safety officers to help with traffic control. It's, uh, it's the only fireworks display in this immediate vicinity, so it's very popular. And, um, um, they will have officers present as well as necessary apparatus to, during the show. And it is before council for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Waltz and, um, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Price, thank you, made the second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? I can only say that, um, I had complaints for last year about the fact that people couldn't leave. It was so congested. So we asked Woodside if they would be considered adding more to the, uh, public safety and they were very minimal and said that they were, would be happy to do that. I'm sorry. Um, all those in favor? Motion passed unanimously.
It's a great event.
Yes.
That the whole city can partake in.
I just wanted people to, to know that they were happy to help. The next item is approval of a resolution improving application for the Safe Streets For All Implementation Grant. Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Uh, March of twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, just last month, you approved a resolution adopting this, uh, action plan. With the plan adopted, we have additional grant funding available to implement some improvements identified to improve safety for pedestrians, cyclists and drivers throughout the city, but particularly in high-entry networks identified in the action plan. It is separate from the demonstration grant that was awarded in the amount of eight hundred thousand. This will allow staff to implement projects and strategies that were identified in our action plan and described, uh, um, at our last council meeting. It would require twenty percent, um, city match. We would apply for up to ten million in grant funding using as- Uh, we would apply for up to 10 million in grant funding using as our match, uh, we, you set aside, council did, uh, some plutonium funds and, and CPST funds dedicated for this sort of, uh, these sort of improvements. And the application is June 26th of 2025 and it is before council for consideration.
So moved, Madam Mayor. I second. Let me just note that I saw eyes on Aiken, uh, just smiling because they've been great participants and had input in this along with Maria working with the team as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
She wants to.
We have a final item. The final item on tonight's agenda is approval of an auditing firm for fiscal years 2025, 2026 and 2027. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. We are required to have an independent audit via, per state law and we file it annually with the state treasurer's office. This, uh, we issued a request for proposals for a single certified public accounting firm to perform an audit for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 25, 26 and 27. We received one proposal from Malden and Jenkins and we recommend that we engage them to perform our annual audits for the next three fiscal years at a total cost of 192,000 dollars with an option for a two-year extension. Uh, since proposals are for professional services, fees are not the only factor used. Malden and Jenkins has extensive government practices, all right, has an extensive government practice and, um, they include entities like us which receive the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which we've received every year since 1992. And, um, this is, uh, for three years, 192,000 dollars with no additional cost for routine questions, not requiring significant time, and it is for council's approval.
Um, may I have a motion for?
So moved, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gregory made the motion and a second from? Councilwoman Gerardo.
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Gerardo seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor?
Did you say that we only got one bid?
That's correct. Yeah, a lot of, uh, accounting firms are going away from governmental accounting, we found. Um, I know we used Elliott Davis for a number of years and they've moved away, uh, or, or moved away from doing it, but, uh, yes, it was a little surprising, frankly.
Did we vote?
No.
May I have the vote, please? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. Now we open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. Yes, Ms. Teresa.
Good evening. Good evening. Also, good evening, Mayor. How are, how's everybody today? Good. Awesome. Or tonight, should I say? At your back. I am just ecstatic, okay? And I'm ecstatic because there are good, good things going on, but you've heard from Lex and Kurt. But also, I would love to thank you guys, city council, public safety, and they walked out because I, they probably figured I was going to say what I'm saying. But we have been having so many problems over in the Pine Crest, Washington Circle area. We have a camera now. It has made a difference.
Good.
We feel, I can't even explain how we feel, um, because it's monitored. And sad to say that people have to be monitored, but if it's, if it's helping my elderly people, the village that raised me and also people that want to be safe and feel safe, it is doing just that. So I thank y'all so much for that. We are just ecstatic, okay? I can now leave and go to Atlanta to see my daughter and my grandbaby in peace without people calling me.
Without calls.
Having to call the police for them because they're too scared to call the police. So whenever, anytime I'm not here, I'm in Atlanta now, so I can go a little bit, you know? But I just want to thank y'all from the bottom of my heart. Thank y'all. We, everybody in that area, thank you guys. Thank you, Teresa. Y'all so much. We have a lot of work to do, but this is a beginning. Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Anyone else? Okay. Are there any items from the city manager this evening?
Yes, uh, briefly, um, reminder, we have the volunteer luncheon at Newberry Hall, uh, Thursday at noon. This is the annual luncheon where we recognize our board members, members of boards, commissions and committees. Uh, they receive no compensation, none of them. Uh, this is the equip, uh, the, the extent of their, um, being, um, being provided, uh, something. And, um, we just want to show our appreciation. I want to remind too that, uh, we will have at the next meeting a presentation as we're getting close as it relates to the, um, um, Hotel Aiken and related properties, um, with an update, uh, at the meeting. And that's my update this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Councilwoman Gregory made the motion and a second from Councilwoman Broll. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned. All those in favor?